Public for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I stared for a minute, I thought I was doing it by myself. Okay, do I hear our motion to set the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Jack, seconded by whom?
Kami.
Second, Kami, okay. Any discussion on the agenda? Call for the question.
Chris Flaherty.
Hi.
Lance McDaniel.
Hi.
Jack Shunenmeyer.
Hi.
Kami Hooton.
Hi.
Jerry Noys.
Hi.
Jerry Wright.
Hi.
And I don't see, I don't see Regina yet. If somebody sees her, I'll call her name.
Okay. We have everybody but Regina on track?
Yes.
Okay. Before we get started, let's remember to turn our cell phones on vibrate and because we're virtual, whenever we eat or do anything, that really comes across. So let's eat cake or pie or something non-noisy. Do we have any staff that would, it's not on here, but any community input?
Yeah, and President Wright, I'd just like to highlight that I appreciate the board time out of their busy day and especially week, and especially the month that you're supposed to have a little bit of relief and not have any board meetings. And this is your second time we had to come together for the, for this special meeting that is, you know, specifically on the reopen, the schools in just a few weeks. So thank you for coming.
Thank you. Any staff that wants to come forward? Okay. Administrators? Melissa, did you have something? Okay, I guess not. So let's go to the consent calendar for our action items. Did you get your consent calendar, see how many going on, all of our employments and resignations? Do I hear a motion to accept the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Jack, seconded by Lance. Any discussion? I'd like to take this time to say that with, with Vicki leaving after as many years as she's been there, I think the high school is losing somebody very, very valuable. I wish her the best. Anything else?
I would, I would just like to say that I was excited to see a couple of our, the ones that were leaving actually sign back on as substitutes. Yeah, that was a relief a little bit.
Yes, it was. Anything else?
I would just like to acknowledge the the dedication of some of our, our employees that are retiring and just say that I appreciate all the dedication that they have and, and completely respect their, their decision.
Absolutely. Anything else? Take call for the question?
Chris?
Hi.
Lance McDaniel.
Hi.
Jack Shunenmeyer.
Hi.
Kami Hooton.
Hi.
Jerry Noys.
Hi.
Jerry Wright.
Hi. Okay, next on our agenda is the 2021 add six additional custodians. Lori will be using, well, let's have a motion first and then we'll discuss it.
Sherri, I think what's next in line is the, the plan for the reopening.
Oh, I, you're right. I just, I just zapped that right off. Okay, reopening, our plans for reopening the schedule. We need to hear a motion before we can discuss.
Make a motion for the opening.
Second.
Chris made the motion, seconded by Kami.
That was.
Okay, we're open for discussion at this point.
Sherri, Jack made the motion.
Jack made the motion, okay. So Jack made the motion, Kami seconded it. Now we're open for discussion. Everybody did receive it, we discussed it the other night. We read, I am hoping that Lori sent out the surveys and the things that, the comments that were made. Anybody want to open up with that?
Well, I, I can go ahead and get started with what, what I have. Has, has much changed since the, the, what was presented to us on Thursday?
The only changes was the additions that were reflected from the board work session and some specific edits from Jack that he had suggested, which were clarifications. And then the other addition too, that was reflected in my email, is that the district will be incurring the, the cost of the insurance as we discussed last Thursday night.
Okay. Okay, that is, that was good news, thank you. I, I think that we need to, reading this and hearing, reading a lot of the discussions on there. Lori, if we chose not to reopen the school, which came out quite often in that survey, what would that mean to our schools and our staff and in result, our students?
Okay. So, and I'd just like to, to highlight first is that, you know, does encompass, you know, in-person, but also remote learning, which, you know, obviously the remote, remote learning is, is at the forefront of, you know, do we become a, a district with strictly online learning? Like what we did last spring. I, I have to say, I appreciate, you know, all the staff's due diligence last spring and, and the reallocation of duties and things. But I do have to say, it's a lot cheaper to run online strict than to actually, you know, run districts with in-person instruction, which is really, you know, why we're here. That's why we're here for education. And so there, we wouldn't need the same level of staffing patterns if we did go online. You're asking specifically how that would affect staff. We would have basically where, you know, we're being identified as frontline workers needed for the education of students, that we would be identifying our, our frontline workers that would be needed for the online instruction.
Okay.
Which would be a tragedy, I like to add.
Yes. We, we, there are a lot of things there about masks. And I know that we all are coming from different points of view. So I, I do not want us to get into a political discussion. I want us to be reasonable and thoughtful about where we're going. There's, there's two sides to the masks. What I've been reading a lot is that, I've been doing a lot of research, and masks are good in one sense, but in another sense, they, they're harmful. Kids can't, if they're outside playing and they're wearing a mask, they can't breathe. They don't get enough oxygen. So there, there's that concern. There's the concern with teachers about their health. And I, I don't know what to say. My, personally, I am pushing 70. I'm asthmatic. I understand health concerns. I live with a 93-year-old mother. I really understand health concerns. But my overriding concern is our students and what is going on with them. We need to make sure that we take care of our students emotionally, socially, and academically. And I will fight for my students in every possible way. So I'm just throwing that out, just saying it right. I want to be very honest and blunt on where I stand. So if anybody else has anything else to say, please, please participate in the discussion.
Yeah, let me, yeah, let me make just a couple of comments. Basically, where the, where the masks are critically important is inside. And that's both, both the law, the, the governor's executive order. And I'm, I'm on the, the Health and Committee, and I think there's generally, general agreement there that every child should be wearing the, the masks. Because it, and again, the math is, the mask basically is to protect other people. The social distancing is really to protect the individual person. But I, I think it's, it's essential that, that that be implemented and that it be carried out by everybody.
So what you're saying is you think that kindergarteners should wear a mask?
I think.
Even though, even though signs is saying that they do not transmit the disease?
Yeah, I think, I think it's, it's better, well, from an administrative point of view, if, if everybody does it. I mean, you can certainly make the case that, that kindergarteners don't need it, but when, when you're, when you're basically trying to assure compliance, you know, it's, it's a bit easier to do if, if everybody does it. And I've seen very young children in places that are wearing them and, you know, they seem to be doing okay.
However, our, our planning, our, what we have laid out is fifth grade and above will be wearing masks, is that correct?
That's correct.
Stuck on buses, right? Stuck on buses?
Buses will be mandatory.
All students wear on buses, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's correct, but that's not what the, that's not, my understanding is, is that that's not what the, what the Science Committee, or at least certainly members of the, the Science Committee are, are recommending.
Jack, I can have a clarification point is the, the CDC guidelines for buses is if you can't do the, the social distancing of three feet or greater, then you can have the students wear masks. And so that's why we have masks for, the students will need to wear masks if they want to ride the bus.
Is there any more discussion?
Um, I, yeah, I have, actually, I have something just for, to make sure that I kind of covered what I was wanting to say, but, you know, thank you for, we have so many people zoomed in, I appreciate that. And I appreciate everyone who sent in their surveys. And unfortunately, our kids are the ones, our students are the ones going to take the biggest hit from all of this. And, and I will just say, as a parent and a community member, I think the kids need to go back to school as close to pre-COVID as possible. You know, there, if you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. If not, don't. Take your own health, education, and career into your own hands, and do what you feel is right for your family. Because these aren't life decisions that just happened because of COVID. These are decisions that, people have to make these tough decisions all the time. And, and I've not, I've not heard of the state, the CDE, the Health Department, or the reopening committee, like you were saying, Sherri, giving us any, addressing any of the harmful effects of healthy people wearing the masks. And so, in my opinion, some, we will have a lot of healthy people actually being at risk because of this plan. But as a board member and realizing we have certain guidelines and we are suggesting follow, and I can appreciate the time and the efforts of our committee, that I don't know that they were put to, they were not as productive as I think they could have been. You know, I had a, you know, I have a job, so I had an hour to read over the, the multiple, you know, 17-page plan, and I had a lot of questions in an hour to kind of deal with a lot of that, but I still have questions. And I think this plan is unrealistic, counterproductive, and eliminates the whole reason for going back to school in person. I'm not completely for online either, but I do not see us being able to stay on top of all the issues that will arise, you know, as they, they just unfold on top of us, concerning the COVID cases, if we have any. I think that'll get completely away from us with, like, who, how many, how long, et cetera. And assuming that our parents are going to screen the children before they get to school is negligent. I've not heard a whole lot on the transportation and nutritional part, but having an open campus is very careless. Having, allowing the students to sit together on the bus, but then allowing them to social distance at school is hypocrisy. Allowing the fourth grade and younger to, to opt out of wearing masks, but then having their schoolmates, siblings, they have to wear a mask. Some of the safety precautions presented in this plan should already be part of our cleaning protocol anyway, as far as washing hands and disinfecting and stuff like that. I know we have rock star custodians, and even with adding the extra custodial staff, I'm not sure it'll get done as presented. We have some amazing teachers and extremely awesome students, but I feel like, I don't see how the teachers are going to be able to teach and the students get to learn at a productive level. Students that are behind will get further behind, and students that are excelling, they're not going to be able to be, to push themselves for a little further. They didn't have any options for that, as far as I can tell. If we do go back in person, I would suggest a later start date for the students, so the teachers can prepare their rooms and themselves for a lot of this protocol and get ready for the different learning scenarios when we do go back to school and in case we do have a, an outbreak. And then possibly for when the students come back, if we can take a couple of days to actually have a couple of learning days to get them used to this, the new bunch of rules they're going to have to follow. And I, I know that no matter which way we go, if we're going to lose students and teachers, and that's, and that, that's a tragedy, but as of today, that's a reality. And I just want to say that, you know, I'll just end with, why did we come up with a reopening plan to keep everyone safe and blotch it with how inconsistent the plan is? I, I think there's, needs to be a lot more done. I don't think that, I, I feel like I haven't been educated enough on it or had. You know, I think you can have your inputs, but I still think that we have a way to go in a short amount of time. So that's my thoughts.
Anybody else?
So I'd just like to clarify and to a couple of comments that Sherri, all the guidelines there are guidelines with the CDE guidance, and I'm not so sure we can open without following those guidelines.
I, and I understand that.
And they don't expire, so, and I do have to call, say, I do think that, you know, this plan was worked on for the whole summer, and it's all research-based. Multiple stakeholders have been in this, so as far as not doing due diligence, I have to respectfully disagree with you.
Okay, well, and, and I did, that's why I said, in my opinion, as a, as a parent and a community member, but as a board member with our teachers and students and staff and everybody involved, I, I appreciate, I, I said I appreciated the time and everything put into it. If we've been working on it all summer, I've only been just involved just recently, and I mean, with some of the stuff, and kept up to date on a weekly basis or anything, where we kind of knew, the, the last board meeting we had, we had it just ways how we thought we would like to see the school go, how we would like to go back to school, and that was kind of the, the end parts of it. I do know that we have the guidelines we need to follow, and that's what makes it difficult for, for everyone, I mean, and, and everyone involved. So I'm not, I'm just not discrediting the committee at all. And like I said, I have not heard the opposite end of it either, how unhealthy, wearing a mask for that long. And I think that our, not just one mask a week from our governor, I, I do believe we need to step that up a bit to, to make them feel a little safer.
Yeah, and the district is good looking at providing masks too. And, and I do, you know, acknowledge it, it's a challenge where we are right now, and it's going to be a challenge this fall, and it's going to have to be, you know, adaptability and flexibility, because things are changing. So.
Absolutely, they could change tonight and scrap our whole plan, and we'd have to start over, so.
That's true.
Yeah, I, I have a few things.
Okay.
As far as masks harm in healthy people, I think we need to go to the hospital and talk to the nurses and the doctors, who are all healthy people that wear masks all the time. And I don't see them falling out sick and going home. I, I think that's a misnomer or misinformation. If you're healthy, the, the mask is going to help you, it's not going to make you sick. Now, there are people that could have, you know, if you're asthmatic or anything else that drops your oxygen levels, you could, you know, absolutely, it could affect you if you're, if you're breathing heavily, exerting yourself, or, you know, stuff like that. But I, I think that we are still, it, it's kind of like we're desensitized to it, but we're in the middle of a global pandemic, still currently, global, not just the United States, even, you know, it's just, it's everywhere. There still isn't available treatment for it, for that doesn't require hospitalization, still no vaccine for it. We need to keep the children safe and get them back to school, but yet, the main concern ultimately is the teachers and the staff, because if we don't keep the kids in a position to keep the staff safe, then who's going to teach kids? Who's going to run the schools? You know, because they're all going to get sick. If we just let people, well, you can wear a mask, you don't wear a mask, if you wear a mask, you disagree with a mask. It just doesn't work that way. See, everybody has to do it and care enough about everybody else to have this. It, it's a huge oh, loss for the word. It's, it's, it's a, it's an inconvenience, right? Because we don't have the, the massive outbreaks here and stuff, but it, it's all, it's all around us, and we're a hotbed for traveling, people traveling through here, and I don't think it's a matter of if we have an outbreak, it's going to be when. So, you know, it, it sucks. I hate wearing the mask. I can't stand them. But, you know, it's like, I don't want to be responsible for carrying something to somebody else, or even, even somebody I know getting sick and, and having to sit there and wonder if it was me, because, you know, I just disagreed with it. Now, when you're on your own, and you're in the, in your public, or you don't agree with it and everything, that's fine, but if we have guidance, and we have guidelines, and we have mandates, so we are a country that is run on the rule of law, and there's a lot of laws out there that a lot of people disagree with, that sheriffs make, cities make, counties make, states make, and it's up to us to abide by those, even if we disagree with them. Because it just doesn't work. You can't have your cake and eat it too. So, to me, it's like, if we're going to go forward and, and open the schools, we have to respect what the state's telling us to do, or we don't, or we don't do it. I mean, because ultimately, those, those teachers and staff are the real ones at risk, not the children. That's, that's kind of my, my thing. It's like, what are we going to do if those people get sick? Who's going to pay for them to get sick? Is the district going to pay for them? Is the feds going to pay for them? Who's going to do the substitute? And who's going, you know, it's just, it's a huge, a huge problem if we're not proactive on trying to keep our staff safe and healthy.
Let me just, if, if I can, just to add on to just a little bit Chris's comment, which I, which I absolutely agree with. I mean, I've, I've got a daughter, who some of you know, is a critical care nurse at St. Anthony's in Denver, which is a level-one hospital, and there are days she wears a mask for 10 hours a day, plus an awful lot of other stuff. And, you know, and she's managed to live with it and adapt, and because it's not just for her benefit, but for the people who are quite ill that, that, that she's dealing with. So, you know, I, I don't have a great deal of sympathy for people who can't wear a mask for a couple of hours or so. The other thing is that there's just overwhelming evidence to suggest that social distancing and wearing a mask works. I mean, if you look at the number of cases by state and by country, the ones that are most successful have the lowest rate of COVID IT, the lowest death rates are the ones that do a good job of protecting their, their citizens and have an overwhelming majority of people that are actually abiding by these regulations that Chris has described.
Thank you. I think that one thing we are transgressing, because at no point did we say we were not going to have them wear masks. We're following the guidelines, and from fifth grade on up, they will have masks, teachers will have them. So, kind of think we beat that dead horse quite a bit. Is there anything else on this plan that you guys would like to discuss? Kami, I haven't heard from you.
I've, I've been listening, I've been really giving this a lot of thought. I appreciate all my constituents with their comments, and they all have been very valid. What I like to say is, mask or no mask, you know, that, that's a hurdle we just need to, to cross and, and let go.
Right.
I battle with asthma, but I have reached out to my doctor, and she said if I, and it's mild, it's chemically induced, so I wear a mask, which I was at the high school for most of the day today, doing some site visits there, and the chemicals that's being used are very harsh, and it was hard for me to breathe without the mask on any other given day pre-COVID. So for me, wearing the mask, it's protecting me from any asthmatic symptoms that I would get, just the cleaning smells that's within our buildings, but that's for a different topic. So my doctor told me, which I spend, I, I work out, so spin class is an hour worth of climbing, sprinting, and everything on a stationary bike. And if I can do that, I can certainly wear a mask. So that has helped me kind of get over that hurdle. The mask is recommended by all of our world health organizations, our medical staff, it's all been medically proven, still has been recommendations. Currently, we're in an order, makes a difference in the law, but currently, it's still an order stated by our governor. So the person of, of who I am, I'm going to follow that order. And so, as back to the plan, I think the plan, has, it's been presented to us in June, as well as in July, and current, you know, I think, you know, some of the, the comments and thoughts that teachers and parents have been saying, we cannot think of every variable that's going to come about. You know, this is going to be a living, breathing guideline document that our district's going to take us moving forward of getting our kids back into school. We know that they need that social, whether it's six, three feet, six feet apart, they still need that social environment, they need that teacher instruction, they need to be in a classroom. So I believe this document is our, our starting point, but I don't see it's the end-all to education, and that's what we're in the business of. I think everybody can agree. Education of our students, and it takes our professional teachers who have gone above and beyond over the summer since, well, actually since March, of taking our students to where they are currently, and I can see them rising above of where we've been. This is a great pivotal moment for Montezuma-Cortez School District to take education up to the next level, and blending the technology in with our classes even more so, in the event that this global pandemic actually hits us hard impact, as we all know will at some point, we will be that one step ahead. So when we are going back into a distance learning, our teachers aren't scrambling of trying to figure out how to teach our kiddos. Our parents already have an idea, and I'm off my soapbox now. And I'm off my soapbox now. I'm in support for as this moving forward is laid out and planned. Yes, am I happy about the mask all day long? No, was I winded when I finished going up and down ladders today wearing a mask? But there was many factors. There was heat and everything else, but I survived. And um, it's going to be, we want to protect everybody from kindergarten through bus drivers to admin staff to teachers to board members to parents. We need to keep everybody safe. And just as Chris said, if we all can do our part, get these kiddos an education. That's where we're at. We need to get our students an education. And so that's my two cents.
Thank you. Lance, do you have anything to say about anything except masks?
Yeah, I'll avoid the mask. There's
Thank you.
Couple, couple issues that I have uh with the plan. And I don't know that they're insurmountable or not. Uh, I don't like the fact that we're relying on the parents uh to check the temperatures and and the health of their kids before they go to school. I'm certain there are several households without thermometers. And I don't know what the backup to that would be. The second point that I'm not terribly thrilled with is the transportation. I I understand the social distancing and masking in the in the buses and the requirement or the wishes to put family members or neighbors seated together. I'm just not convinced that that effectiveness of that. And the third thing that I'm concerned about with the plan is in the high school. First of all, the the uh the open campuses for lunch. Uh, second of all, the classes moving from one room to another. And uh I'm concerned that that when the when the kids leave for lunch, when the people leave for lunch, they're just going to throw their masks in the car or leave them in their pocket or then walk or ride to McDonald's or Walmart to get their food and they're going to hang out close to each other. And I don't know that that's, to me, that's just another way of squirting around the 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 topic of being socially distanced and I'm sorry to use the word masked, but so I I I don't, I don't like that part of it. I also I'm concerned with how how we're going to find substitutes. I'm assuming, and maybe I'm wrong, most of our most of our substitutes are 50 or older. Would that be close to Carol?
Carol, would you like to answer this and what we're talking about as far as the plan?
Sure. Thank you. Um, uh, thank you, board members, and thank you for Lance. That's a good question. That's something we've been giving a lot of thought to. Um, and so, you know, one of, we have multiple goals, obviously, for this year, but we definitely want to ensure continuity of staff. We want to protect the health of our staff as multiple board members and Superintendent Hockness have mentioned um and provide continuity of instruction to our students. Um, and so what we are planning to do is restructure our sub budget to hire dedicated long-term subs for each of the buildings um so that we can have a person that's dedicated, that's part of the team, that's there every day, that's part of the cohort, that understands our health and safety practices, rather than having the um number of subs that are moving between buildings to the degree possible and really be able to, A, on the days when we don't need subs, provide that additional support that we know that our staff and 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 families and students will need. And then on the days when we do need subs, we already have a ready-made person that is already part of the team, already there every day, already familiar with all of our health and safety protocols, our educational priorities for the year, the kids um and things like that. So that does a couple of things. It allows us to, I think, meet hopefully a good portion of the need um in alignment with our health and safety guidelines. It allows us to add additional support to staff and students in the building. Um, and then it also allows us to pay at a higher level and offer benefits, which we're hoping will attract additional folks from the community into the sub role for this year, um because it will be then a dependable um role um that they can count on for the year with, um, you know, a level of K that's higher than their typical um daily subs and also provides benefits. So we're hoping that those things are combined together will increase the pool of people that will be attracted to subbing for us this year as well as the consistency from a health and safety and an instructional standpoint.
Thank you, Carol. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Carol. That was awesome. Okay, let's, is there anybody else that wants to say anything before we call for them?
Yeah, uh, one, one more, uh, one more comment. Sherry. One of the concerns that I have and several other members on the the Health Committee, including Mark Meyer, have is uh having the the parents be responsible for doing the testing of students prior to coming to school. I mean, our our basic feeling is that that's simply not going to work. I mean, there will be some parents that do it. There'll be some parents that don't have the equipment to do it or don't think it's necessary. Again, I think that the best chance that we have here for success is that as many people and children as possible be compliant. I mean, obviously, it would be nice if everybody would, but we all know that that's not going to happen. But uh, you know, I I think we're, I think we're likely to get kids coming to school who are sick, and that's going to really affect the the outcome of this whole process.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I I just real quick on to add on to what Jack said, I did see in one of the um in that spreadsheet, Lori's thought with some of the concerns, questions, concerns. Somebody made a valid point is, uh, why aren't we screening them as they get on the bus? You know, if the have the bus driver screen them, I mean, are the majority of the children unattended at the bus stops? Or are they still with their parents at the bus stops? Because you could head off the, those kids even getting on the bus first thing in the morning if you have the bus driver.
We actually um are now working on what the drop off and pickup would look like, and we have a meeting um tomorrow on that. The reality of having a bus driver to take the temperature of every student, we would need to add an additional staff member, I think, in order to accommodate that.
You know, bus driver is a full-time job, just driving the bus. Okay, okay, let's call for the question. Phyllis, the vote?
She's muted.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was muted, but. Uh, okay. Chris Flaherty?
Aye.
Lance McDaniel? Lance?
Yeah, I'm can I abstain for now and while we go around? I'm still.
No, no, we can't. No, we have to go the way it's called.
All right, all right, all right, all right, aye.
Sorry.
Aye, Phyllis.
Aye, okay, thank you. Uh, Jack Schoenenmeyer?
Sort of a reluctant aye, but.
Tammy Hooton?
Aye.
Sherry Noise?
Um, with the plan that's presented, uh, no.
And Sherry Wright?
Aye. Now then, just to sum it up, this is not a perfect plan and it's going to be changing quite a bit. So those of you who are reluctant, um, please understand we're changing. I do have a question for Jack. Jack, you keep talking about being on the Health Committee and and meeting with all these people, and I'm on the Health Committee also. Are you having meetings that I'm not aware of?
Um, I don't know. We we did have, we did have a very short meeting on on Monday. Yesterday, uh, we had one meeting last week and I I think.
So I've only attended one meeting and I I really feel like I should be included since I'm on that committee also. So would you please make sure I am invited?
You absolutely should. Uh, Sue uh is the the one that uh is handling that. So uh, call or send an email to Sue because you should be, yeah, you should be.
Yes, absolutely, because I am a part of that committee. And I, after reading some of these things, I'm kind of going, why am I not aware of this stuff that's going on?
Okay, moving. Sherry, can I make a clarification on that?
Absolutely.
The clinical committee that's made up just the the doctors and Dr. Aiken, and then there's the larger committee that is going to be convened next Wednesday, I believe. Carol, is that right? That you should have received a invitation to?
I have not.
Where everybody comes together. But if you would like to be part on the the clinical side, which is more just the the health providers on the hospital, we we can definitely include you. In fact, they're they're willing to meet.
Yeah, I'm I'm on.
I would appreciate it because we we have Jack in there and and I I just want to make sure that that what he misses, I'm picking up, and what I'm missing, he's picking up. So please let me be included.
Yeah, I'm more on the 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 clinical committee as a as a statistician rather than a rather than a board member because I've done a lot of, well, I don't have the medical background. I've got, I've got a pretty strong background in terms of of trying to understand uncertainty and risk assessment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving right along. Okay, thank you, Lori. Our 2021, six additional custodians. I need to hear a motion before we discuss it.
I make a motion to approve to hire the six additional custodians for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Motion made by Tammy, seconded by?
Second.
By Sherry. Okay, we're open for discussion. Lori, would you like to explain?
Uh, yes, board, this came out of a needs assessment for the additional cleaning of the buildings and it's reflecting an additional custodian per building, but with a blend for two of the smaller schools. And so the A for these positions will be coming out of the CRF funds, which is the COVID funds, and then also the CARES Act grant, which we received. And so at this time, this is a request for this coming year um for these additional positions, and obviously we will be reevaluating going into the following year.
Personally, I I think that that is very wise, and I think it's something we desperately need. Anybody else have have anything to say?
I just know that we've been shorthanded, I think, on custodians for a while, so hopefully hopefully this will lighten a lot of the load that they've been taking on all summer long anyway, even, well, since since February, March. We appreciate that, getting the new, getting more custodians.
They've worked hard, yes. Anybody else? Okay, call for the motion. Call for the question. I'm sorry.
Chris Flaherty?
Aye.
Lance McDaniel?
Aye.
Jack Schoenenmeyer?
Aye.
Tammy Hooton?
Aye.
Sherry Noise?
Aye.
And Sherry Wright?
Aye. Hey, our policy adoption. Um, we can do them individually or in a group. I am assuming everybody has read them.
Sherry, do you mind if I just add a little bit of background context to these policies?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. So um, I had actually asked Phyllis to um include the very first policy that you had in your board packet. And I had highlighted the one section that says under unusual circumstances that the board can uh vote in policies for a temporary, and then we bring them back and follow the the protocol. These are policies that have came from CASB and the recommendation, part of the recommendations is to um have some voted on prior to um August 12th or 15th and then
August 14th, yeah.
August 14th, thank you. And then the other ones is a requirement that they are adopted prior to the the uh school year. And so these will be, um, the board will be approving these tonight to be in compliance. And then I will take these policies and work with the administrators next week at our meeting. But then we will be bringing them back to the board for the first and and second reading to be very thoughtful. Um, and so we'll be revisiting them again.
So we are to adopt them tonight and then um at our August meeting do a first reading?
Yes, we can do that, but they will go into effect tonight. So for the implementation for the school year, and then we can bring them back for for a more thoughtful discussion for the board so they have time to really um look at them.
Without objection, I would move that we uh we act on all of the um the the policy changes at one time.
Second.
Thank you, Jack. Thank you. Do Lance?
Yes.
Any discussion? Yes, go ahead. Lance, did you have something to say?
No, no, I'm.
Oh, okay. Any discussion? Call for the question.
Chris?
Aye.
Lance McDaniel?
Aye.
Jack Schoenenmeyer?
Aye.
Tammy Hooton?
Aye.
Sherry Noise?
Aye.
Sherry Wright?
Aye. Okay, we're moving right along. E, discussion for our board member code of conduct. Did everybody read that? Did they wordsmith it? Tonight, we're just adding suggestions to it, so let's open it up. Anybody want to start? I will start then. Oh, go ahead, Sherry.
No, I was I was just going to mention that um I I think we we all have different points of view and different um ideals and whatnot, but I think when um we are on a board, I think that if we're if we're going to have social media where we are going to say things that could potentially reflect on the whole board as a whole, that maybe it should be part of your part of your face, your page, that you are on the school board. And it's more or less linking, linking your ideals with the school board. I know we have that whole, you know, freedom of speech thing and freedom of this and freedom of that. I mean, I don't think it can be a law, but I would ask everybody to be conscientious of that on on things that you're posting or putting and then and also connecting yourself with a school board. I don't know how to go about that. I have no idea.
Does anybody else have anything to say?
Well, just to go with what um Sherry Noise is saying, if we look at the uh code of ethics that the we have before us, if we look at the fourth bullet where it says, um, goes along with, you know, we have our free expression of our opinions, but we need to seek systematic communications between the board. Um, so if our social media comments and um out in the public comments can then be construed of as the reflection of the whole board or under the whole then that's that's not good. It needs to be in this type of setting that it is um seeking the systematic communications of and expressions.
Anybody else? I was reading um and I I don't, I didn't bring the paper out with me. I think it was the Knights of Columbia where they said that if you have a social media and you uh publicize anything for a board that you're on, then you should not add personal opinions on that social site. That you use a different site if you're going to use an opinion, but it cannot be the same one where you uh publicize or advertise anything uh for the board that you're on. So I do not know how to wordsmith this. I have contacted policy with CASB and asked them, and they have not got back to me yet. Does anybody else have anything to say?
them, and they have not got back to me yet. Does anybody else have anything to say?
I'd like to say something.
Okay.
First of all, there is the First Amendment. And second of all, there doesn't see a problem with sharing information or posting stuff on, on a personal site that everyone agrees with. Having, posting, posting articles, and not coming out, commenting on them, or posting events and not commenting on them, is not by any means an endorsement, or shouldn't be considered an endorsement. I don't know how many of you all listen or have Twitter accounts and, and happen to see Kay, I can't remember his name, the president of the Denver Public School Board, but he is constantly posting on Twitter and Facebook controversial subjects, and he's the president of the board. So I, I think if you, if, if the idea is to thwart someone's First Amendment rights, then it should be, it should have been, should be part of a discussion that was involved before, oh, this and now. Frankly, I'll stand by anything I've posted. I never lie, well, I take that back. I did post once, or more than once, that I'm Santa Claus, and I also posted that I danced naked in rainstorms. I also
I would like to say that.
Posted, I also posted when France and Belgium had terrorist attacks, that we were all French, or I was French, or I was Belgian. So I don't, I have a real problem being thwarted First Amendment wise, and it's caused, caused an uproar with some people, and be that as it may, I'll take that in stride with whatever happens. But I don't, I don't feel, I don't feel on a personal Facebook page that is being stalked by other people, that not being able to voice your opinions, or state your opinions, or make statements that you believe in is right. So that's my opinion.
Lance, I agree with you 100%. It is your First Amendment right, and that's why we have it up. It's a discussion. And we, as a board, not any one person has any more power than you have. And you're right, it is, we have our First Amendment right, and I would scream bloody murder if somebody tried to take that from me. Does anybody else have anything to say?
I'd just like to add one more thing. There are seven, well, supposed to be seven people on the board. And the thought that one person can influence, one board member who's not even an officer, can influence the rest of the board to their whim, to me, is ridiculous thought. And so I, I don't understand, I mean, I, like I said, I, I, I've been, I am a, I am vocal, and I am liberal. And there are thirty, thirty-five percent of people in the county agree with, with what I'm saying. So I'm, I, in my opinion, I, I don't think I've done anything wrong, or I don't think I've done anything detrimental to the board. And that's just my opinion. But like I
Sherry, I'd just like to add to that. And like I said, there, you know, it's, it's your personal thing. And I would just like to see it be, you, you don't involve that you, like, on your personal page with your personal thoughts. Like, I think things people shouldn't know, you know, even in, I'm just saying, keep it distant from the school board on your personal page. Now, if you want to have a school board page, I would be a little agreeing with that. Like, I don't know the laws or the rules on that, but that's why I mentioned it. I don't know how to go about it. But maybe if it wasn't the first thing that people saw was that you were a school board member, if they agreed or disagreed with something that you had, one way or the other, whether they agree with you. You know, I think putting that on there links you to the rest of us that are, are getting some backlash for it, that we really can't stand, stand up for it, or whatever you want to call it. You know, we can say, yeah, that's his personal page, and yes, it does, it does reflect on, you know, when they, when they talk about the board, they usually don't talk about just one of us until a fair debate. But they, I mean, they pretty much say the board decided, the board did this, the board did that, where, as a whole. So I just, that was just my concern, was just, are there any way that, for you to want to cut that, I mean, even though you're still a board member, cut that tie as far as like announcing that you're on the board, but also having your personal thoughts and opinions. Like I said, that's, that's, might be infringing. It's just more of a, an ask instead of a, you know, you have to, kind of a theme. You, because there is, there is no, I don't know how to go about it.
Hey, anybody else?
Yeah, I, I, I think it's, the irony of it all is that the volunteer board is held seemingly to a higher standard than, say, the county commissioners, as far as
You're right.
As far, right? So, and, and it goes on and on, right? So, but for me, it's like, what I, what I see with, like, do I agree with what he's saying? Not necessarily. Do I support what he's saying? Absolutely. Because that's his, that's his rights, and he's not speaking for the board. So when people come to me and they have an issue with what he's saying, I just say, you know, it's, I don't personally agree with it. But constitutionally, it, it's, it's his right to say what he wants to say, as long as he's not inciting violence and stuff. And it, and it, and we have to expect that, and when it comes, and for our rights to be protected, stood up for, that, that other people will do the same thing, even when they don't agree with us personally. So that's kind of, it, it's a, it's a tough line, you know, I guess. But at the same time,
It is.
I think we owe it to ourselves and each other, and even the people that bring those concerns to us, that I understand your concern, and here's his rights, and here are your rights. And if you feel so compelled to file a petition for removal and want to sign it, that is your right.
Okay, let's, oh, go ahead.
So, yes, that's my two cents on it.
So let's do this. We can't vote because it's a discussion item, but do we bring it back on the agenda, or do we drop it?
I think we drop it.
Okay.
Drop it.
Yeah.
Why would we just drop it? We just review it? It was just a reminder as a board, this is our do's and don'ts. And regardless if we're elected, and it's a volunteer position or paid position, we've been elected, and we are held to a higher standard. We live in a glass house. So our opinions are opinions, and that is our First Amendment. I appreciate this coming to forward to the board as just a reminder of what standards we, as a board, have to live up to.
Thank you. Okay, then it sounds like we're going to drop it, and it won't come forward again. Lance, I really wasn't aiming it at you. I was just putting it out there. I don't even know what you put on your Facebook page, but if you dance naked in the rain, make sure it comes. Obviously, you just did it.
It, you know,
Is that last night?
It, it worked this last week. You know, it worked this last week. So I don't know. I might keep it up.
It worked, it worked. Well, let me get my oats in.
Well, I was gonna say, keep it up so we can get more rain.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, like, but don't, don't hit it again till next week.
Dancing in the rain.
Let me have a week, and then, then start it again. Okay, is there anything else to come before the board? Okay, I adjourned the meeting at 8:06. We did excellent. Thank you.
It did good, Sherry.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you, everybody.